Welcome to the June 4th, 2018, meeting of the Stillwater City Council. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I guess I didn't officially call this meeting to order. I'll do that now. I like to do that. That's fun. All right. Couple issues real quick up front. We do have a number of public hearings tonight. You do have to be signed up if you're wanting to speak at the public hearing. I do have a number of forms already, but if you're planning to speak and you haven't signed up, please make sure you get a form and bring it up here to Patty so that you can get on the list. All right. That takes us to item three, the consent docket. Counselors, questions, comments, or motions on the consent docket?
Motion to accept the consent docket?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this consent docket. With a vote of four to zero, the consent docket is approved. I have no speakers on public hearing, public comment on agenda items not scheduled for public hearing, so that moves us to item six, the fun part of the evening, the swearing-in of Amy Jeloski for a new city councilor and city council seat one. Judge Ron?
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, please state your full name.
I, Amy Jeloski.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend
That I will support, obey, and defend
the Constitution of the United States of America
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And of the state of Oklahoma.
And of the state of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly receive
And that I will not knowingly receive
directly or indirectly
Directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing
Any money or any other valuable thing.
For the performance or non-performance
For the performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office
And the act or duty pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
And I further swear
And I further swear
That I will faithfully discharge my duties
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
Of the office of
Of the office of
City of Stillwater, Councilor, Office Number One.
City of Stillwater, Councilor, Office Number One.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, Councilor. Thank you. Sign right here. That's pretty much it.
At least have a seat. Thank you, Judge. Welcome to the council, Amy.
Thank you.
Appreciate your being here.
Thank you.
Give her a second to actually sit down before we get into the meat of this thing. All right. That moves us now to item seven, public hearings. We have three items tonight for public hearing. We do have, as I mentioned before, you do have to sign up to speak. There will also be a five-minute time limit on speaking for the items on public hearing. We are going to enforce that tonight. Sometimes we're a little lax with it, but we have a big stack of names to get through tonight, so we will be enforcing the five-minute time limit. Also, if someone has already said something that you wanted to say, you're welcome to just say, "I agree with them." We do want to hear everyone. We do want to have a chance to look more, to get through all of them, so as we go forward, I'll call you up and you'll state your name and your address for the record and state your comments. So, first off, item 7A, receive public comment regarding request for a map amendment to rezoned property located at 310 and 324 South Monroe from RMI Residential Multi-Family Intermediate to RMU Residential Multi-Family Urban. This is CC-18-64. Mr. Dorman, did we have good notice on this item?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Blankenship?
Thank you, Mayor. Presenting this item this evening is Lance Gross, Development Review Manager with our Development Services Department. Mr. Gross?
Thank you. Good evening. The map amendment before you tonight is for the Alpha Tau Omicron Chi Omega Fraternities. The subject site is surrounded by, or with the purple border, and there's two, actually, there's actually two fraternities that are involved in this. The Chi Omega House is right here on the northern portion, and the ATO House is
Excuse me.
Yeah. It appears that we may be having some technical difficulties. There we go.
Sorry about that. Like I was mentioning, the Chi Omega House is located on the northern portion of the subject site. The ATO House is located on the southern portion. The request is to rezon the property from RMI Residential Multi-Family Intermediate to RMU Residential Multi-Family Urban. The zoning to the east, or sorry, to the west is also RMI. RMI is also located down here on the southeast portion. RMU is located right here, and that's a PUD. RMU is located on the northern portion, and in the purple down here is zoned office.
Paul is on it. Either that or she just left because she couldn't take it anymore.
This is a street view looking to the northwest of the ATO House from Fourth Avenue and Monroe. This is a street view of the Chi Omega House looking from Third Avenue and Monroe. And the intent of both of these applications is to demolish or remove the existing buildings and rebuild. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions.
Counselors?
No questions.
No questions? All right. I will, at this time, open the public hearing. We have one speaker signed up for item 7A. That's Kelly Harris. Kelly, you have a five-minute time limit.
I will try to keep it short. Kelly Harris with Keystone Engineering located at 923 South Lowry, here representing the owners tonight. Lance did a great job just giving an overview. Both of these properties are looking at reconstruction in the future, and the higher zoning limit, zoning classification would allow them to go for higher density, which in the reconstructions, most of these projects are wanting, so any questions I could answer? Thank you.
Thank you. Lance, do you have staff recommendation?
The Planning Commission recommends a recommended approval by a vote of four to zero for this application.
Thank you. Counselors, comments, discussion, or motions?
Motion to accept the staff recommendation approving the rezoning of property.
Second.
We have a second, a motion and a second for item CC-18-64. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that item is approved. That brings us to item 7B, receive public comment regarding request for a map amendment to rezoned property located at 1306 West University from RTM Residential Two Family and Multi-Family to RMI Residential Multi-Family Intermediate, CC-18-63. Mr. Dorman, did we have good notice on this item?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Blankenship?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Lance Gross will present this item also. Mr. Gross?
Thank you. The second map amendment before you tonight is for the Delta Tau Delta Fraternity. The subject site is indicated by the purple boundary. The existing zoning is RTM Residential Two Family Multi-Family, and they wish to rezon the property to RMI Residential Multi-Family Intermediate. The property to the north is zoned RSS, Residential Small Lot Single Family. RTM is located to the west. RMI zoning is located to the south and also to the east. This is a street view looking from University and Garfield, looking to the northwest. This is a street view looking to the northeast at the parking lot, and you can see the western edge of the building right now. And the same intention for this application is to raise the structure and rebuild a new one. Be happy to try to answer any questions?
Counselors, any questions? Seeing none.
Well, I was curious if they wanted to do the same thing that the other people did, why they didn't go to multifamily urban.
You know, that's a good question. That's a more intense use. Yeah, possibly the applicant or applicants represented can probably answer that.
Other questions? Thank you, Lance.
Yes.
At this point, I'll open the public hearing. We have three people signed up on this item. We'll start with Stephen Gose.
Good evening. Stephen Gose, Gosen Associates, 113 East 8th, here on behalf of the applicant. Lance's staff report covers it pretty well. The C3 plan has it as university use, so going to RMI with the RMI to the east, the RMI to the south. If we tried to ask for RMU, it'd be an island out there on its own. There's no adjacency. The big request in here is to be able to go three stories right now. The height limit is 35 feet, so the 50 feet allows that. They're not looking at changing the density on the property. The number of beds will stay about the same, the number of parking spaces. They just want that height. The new building will be set back a little to the north and parking surrounding it, so. Joe Millar with Delta Tau Delta is here too to answer any other user-type questions, but if there's anything for me, I'm here.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
All right. We'll have Joe Millar next.
My name's Joe Millar, M-I-L-L-A-R, 3005 West 33rd Avenue here in Stillwater. I'm the House Corporation for Delta Tau Delta Treasurer. Our intent is to go three stories rather than the two we have now, one to two, depending upon how you look at it, but we want to go three stories. I have a model of what the architect plans to build at this point in time, but bed-wise, we will probably be at the same, maybe one or two short of where we are now. Plan to keep as much of the parking spaces as we can, most likely 80 to 80. We have 85 right now. We'll probably keep 80, 81 of them, most likely, but mainly just to be able to go three stories. Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we have Shirley Weeks.
Good evening. My name is Shirley Weeks. I live at 71 University Circle. I could have signed up to speak on both of these items. That way I would have gotten 10 minutes. My general concern about this, if you drive down University Avenue, right now we have two major Greek houses knocked down. These are two more, then the other one is a third one. I'm concerned, do we as a city look at this area in combination, not just as individual houses? I've lived on the circle close to 50 years. I used to be able to walk from my house to the hospital, and except for that first block, I walked through owner-occupied residential houses. Now I can't walk from my house to the hospital because since they put those turn lanes in there, I'm afraid to cross that many lanes. I've gotten too slow to cross that many lanes. But I think overall, from Walnut Street to Washington, or you could go farther if you wanted to, that whole area has changed over time. I'm worried about the infrastructure to support this kind of growth. I'm also concerned about each time one of the university houses increases in size. We have less and less space. I'm a big, a green space. I'm a big supporter of volleyball because they all do maintain a sand volleyball court, and that is someplace for rainwater to come down and soak in. Right now, without all this growth, that water goes into the street, and there's a lot of issues with the water drainage. I don't know how long it's been since the water line was replaced on University Avenue, but when our side of the circle was connected to it, I asked the man, "Did that mean would I have cleaner water?" And he said, "Ma'am, don't go to, down to the corner and look at that water line. You will know if you bring dirty water into a clean line, it's not going to be much cleaner." So I just wondered, do we know how many people live in that area now with all the multiple family houses, plus the Greek houses all expanding? We have parking issues in that area now. I went to a Greek meeting within the last few years, and I said to the kids, "Do you know what the number one problem was on the circle when I moved there?" They said, "Oh, what?" I said, "Parking. We never, ever catch up with parking." That not only, who that mainly causes concern is the Greek area itself. They tell you how many beds they have for the people that sleep there, but a lot of the Greek people don't live in the houses. And on Monday night, I've asked, "Could we delay the commission meeting so I can get off of the circle?" Because it backs up that badly. When I go home, sometimes they're parked on both sides because they need to come to their house meetings. They want to make use of all the benefits of being a Greek, but parking is really an issue. So I would like to urge you as a council to look at this big area, find how many people are living in that area, and do we need to focus on some infrastructure for the city, which costs us money? So maybe the Greek community or the people that are developing should pay some kind of use fee to help us bring things up to great, to support the kind of housing that they want to live in. I'm in favor of them living in good, safe housing, but I also would like for them to have good, safe places to drive, good, safe places to walk and to park. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Shirley.
Thank you.
All right. I will close the public hearing and ask Lance to come back with Planning Commission's
The Planning Commission made a recommendation to approve this application by a vote of four to zero.
Thank you. If I could just ask in response to the comments, the questions of parking and draining, are those going to be addressed at the planning stage as this project moves forward?
Yes. None of these applications have been submitted yet, but they will definitely be looked at whenever they do submit them.
Okay.
Yes.
So the zoning approval won't affect whether we can have parking requirements or drainage issues or things addressed later?
Correct.
Will they be going through what is known as the commercial use by right process? Do you know?
I believe they will, yes.
Okay. And in that process, they'll have to demonstrate compliance with all of our regulations, which include stormwater runoff and parking, among other things?
That's exactly right.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Lance, there was one question brought up, or one comment during the Planning Commission about hours, lights, noise, et cetera. Those are covered by our city ordinances.
Yes, there are definitely ordinances in place to address those, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Counselors, any further questions? Thank you, Lance. Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt the rezoning property located at 1306 West University from RTM Residential Two Family Multi-Family to RMI Residential Multi-Family Intermediate.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve CC-18-63. That item is approved by a vote of five to zero. All right. That takes us to item 7C, public hearing for the purpose of giving members of the public an opportunity to be heard prior to any vote on the proposed Stillwater Reinvestment Plan, a Stillwater Downtown Campus Link project plan, including Increment District Number Three, City of Stillwater. There's a Stray Perkins in there for some reason, but not sure where that came from. All right.
Stray Perkins.
This is where most of our folks are signed up to speak, so again, please limit your comments to five minutes. Please be willing to agree with someone else who's spoken before you if you don't have anything particularly new to add, and we'll try to get through this and hear everyone as we can. So we'll start off with Dr. Doug Major. Actually, I'm sorry. I haven't opened the public hearing. I haven't even done the introduction yet, Doug. I got ahead of myself.
Dan Blankenship?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. To open it up this evening, we'd like to have Mr. Dan Bachelor with the Center for Economic Development Law give us a brief presentation, and then we'll turn it back over to you to open up the public hearing, and we can hear from all our folks.
That sounds like a better plan.
Excellent. Mr. Bachelor?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, distinguished members of council, ladies and gentlemen of the public. I'm Dan Bachelor with the Center for Economic Development Law. The City of Stillwater engaged our firm to develop recommendations and to assist you in assessing the prospects of undertaking a long-term economic development strategy and initiative for this community, and we are honored to do so, and our findings were positive, and we most enthusiastically recommended your consideration of a strategic project plan to advance the economic health of this community. I want to emphasize that our recommendation was to adopt a plan to direct investment and reinvestment into the community, especially in its core area and the area connecting the downtown area to the university campus. We emphasize that this is a strategic economic development plan, not principally a real estate development plan, and you will see that the plan, its objectives, and its approach carry out that fundamental concept. It provides a strategy for generating reinvestment to the core of the community, overcoming inhibitions to mixed-use development, and to invite quality job-generating businesses to locate here. We feel, and our conclusions strongly state, that the City of Stillwater and its surrounding community make an ideal place for the attraction and location of especially non-retail businesses that create the kind of quality jobs that ensure a long-term community health. We feel that a single-focused development activity on a particular development or two will not solve the issues or claim the opportunities for the future. There have been some spurts of real estate development, especially after the adoption of the Business Improvement District in 2007 and after the change in the university housing policies in recent years, but we do not think that those represent a general change in the character or the need or the opportunity of the areas. So the project plan, which was drafted, modified several times, and as a result of the feedback from a citizens' review committee that was appointed, as provided by statute, to review and make recommendations on the project plan, resulted in a plan that says that downtown Stillwater should be a special and unique place to live, work, and play, that we should stimulate the connection between downtown and destination areas for residents and visitors, should encourage new investment and reinvestment, and especially to generate quality jobs. The plan provides an authorization for $32.5 million to pay project costs and is expected to generate over $100 million in new investment. The plan does not impose any new taxes. There was extensive discussion about the eligibility, and the point has been made that there has been some growth in the proposed project area. I want to emphasize that the eligibility of the area does not depend simply on the question of whether or not there has been some real estate development in the area. This area that's recommended for your consideration meets at least two of the three criteria for eligibility under state law. State law makes an area eligible if it is an enterprise area. An enterprise area is an area that has been determined by the state through its Department of Commerce, looking at the demographic area, the population trends, the income, and job opportunities in an area. It qualifies as an enterprise zone because of that criteria. More recently, this area has been designated as an opportunity zone under the new federal tax cut and tax act because of the measures of economic distress that pervade the area generally. It is because of those characteristics that we say that Stillwater, with its many other assets, should be an area of opportunity, and that opportunity should be nourished through a long-term strategic plan, and that is what is recommended in the project plan before you. Want to emphasize that the project plan also provides, in addition to paying project costs, a sharing of the new tax revenues generated by investment development in the Increment District and project area with the affected taxing jurisdiction, that is the schools, the career tech, and the county. 12% of all the increased revenues generated by the project will be allocated to the taxing jurisdictions. The fact is that attracting more investment in the core area and the project area will have positive economic impacts across the community. That means outside of the tax increment financing district. Thereby, the tax base of the other affected taxing entities will be strengthened. Let me just say this one fundamental thing. If the stimulated growth outside of the project area is even only 2/10 of 1% increase in that growth in the rest of the community outside of the project area, that will more than offset what might be perceived as the losses in future growth revenue by the taxing jurisdictions. Our experience in other communities, and one in particular, I'll cite our strategic plan in downtown Oklahoma City, where we were able to increase the modest pre-existing growth of 3% to 4% to an annual growth of 12% within the Increment District and project area. But outside of that Increment District, in the school district, in the career tech district, and in the county, the growth was increased by more than 4% a year as a result of the induced impacts of the economic development activity. Today, in that area, new private taxable investment exceeds over $2 billion. So I would conclude by saying the opportunity before the community is to claim its future by utilizing a thoughtful, consistent, strategic economic development plan. If applied consistently with vision on a long-term basis, the assets that you already possess can be multiplied to create a more healthy economic environment, attract new businesses, create new higher-paying jobs, make this a place where the graduates of our high schools and our colleges, universities will want to stay and live just as you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay. At this point, I will open the public hearing, and I will ask Dr. Major to come to the podium and state his case.
Good evening. My name is Doug Major, and I'm representing Meridian Technology Center at 1312 South Sanger Road. There's no question that economic development's important. Economic development has been a big part of Meridian Technology Center's mission since our inception in 1973. That said, the major source of funding, over 80% of our funding, comes from local ad valorem taxes. These funds were dedicated to Meridian through an overwhelming vote of the citizens that live in this community, and if we, without objection, allow other entities to begin capturing revenue that was dedicated to our organization, we will be unable to maintain the level of programs and services that our patrons have come to expect. Tonight, I'm speaking against the TIF. I'm not against what the TIF is trying I'm not against what the TIF is trying to do and what the city needs to be, but I do not believe the TIF is the proper tool in this particular instance, and there are primarily two reasons for that. The first is the city's proposed area for the TIF is not underdeveloped, and is in fact developing. The law is very clear on where the tools of the Local Development Act should be used. It specifically states, "It is the intent of the legislature that the provision of this act be used in accordance with the following guidelines," and one of those guidelines clearly states that the tools of this act not be used where areas of investment, development, economic growth would have occurred anyway, and that the governing body take great care to exclude areas that do not meet this criteria. One only has to stand at the corner of Sixth and Washington and look to the northeast to see that growth is in fact already occurring in this area. Looking at land records and sitting planning commission records, you can see that other development has already been approved, and developers have purchased groups of properties throughout the area for future planned development. It's very difficult for me to see how this area meets that criteria of not being developed. Without the creation of this TIF, Meridian Technology Center, Payne County, Payne County Health, Stillwater Public Schools, and the City of Stillwater would all benefit from the economic growth that is already occurring and will likely to continue to occur in the area. If this TIF is approved, however, the tax dollars that were dedicated to Meridian, Payne County, and Payne County Health Departments will be stolen, yes stolen, through what can be as little as a majority vote of this council. The second concern that I have is there's no defined plan. The plan as written simply allows the city to collect funds that should go to other tax-receiving entities for some future use. 11.6 million is in the plan to be used for public infrastructure facilities improvement, but there are no details about what those improvements are. The plan sets aside 12.5 million for new business development, but again, doesn't specify what that will be. The plan denotes 5 million will be used for assistance in developing financing, but again, doesn't specify what that means. Early in discussions about this TIF, I was told by the city manager and one counselor that if this TIF was not beneficial to all, it wouldn't be considered and pushed through. There were five tax-receiving entities on the review committee required by law. Of those entities, two voted no, Meridian and the county. One abstained because a representative was told since she was a state employee she couldn't vote. One voted in addition, voted for the TIF, but incidentally, the night before the vote, was promised $5.6 million additional revenue through the TIF, and of course, the city voted for it. I would ask whether or not this clearly communicates the support of all entities. The other thing you'll be voting on tonight is a statement that says there's no detriment to any of the tax-receiving entities in terms of finances or increased need for services. The document you're being asked to improve does not mention the revenue that will be diverted away from the other tax-receiving entities. The almost $5 million from Meridian Technology Center to 3.2 million the county won't get, or over a half million dollars the county health department won't receive. Adoption of this plan as written is adopting a misrepresentation of the truth. I've been told that reasons for previous initiatives that have been put forth to the public from the city, the reason they failed is lack of public trust in the city government. I will close my comments tonight with a question. Will adopting a TIF that is potentially, I believe, illegal, and if not illegal, certainly unethical, and it's financially, and is financially detrimental to other tax-supported educations creating more public trust? I don't believe that it is. I urge you to vote no if you are required to vote on this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Major. I don't think our clock was working for that. Can we?
It's running.
What's that? I didn't see it up here.
Sometimes it doesn't appear on the screen.
Okay. Well, you'll let me know.
Trust me, it will tell us.
Okay. All right. It was under five minutes though, so I appreciate that.
I wrote it that way.
All right, next up, we'll have Chris Redding.
Mayor, councilors, nice to see you all tonight. I am Chris Redding. I'm the chairman of the Payne County Board of Commissioners, also the chairman of Payne County Economic Development Authority, and I'm also representing the Payne County Health Department in their issue tonight as well. Dr. Major did present very well, many of the concerns the county has as well. We are, as we all know, in a time of declining revenues from the state. Much of our money comes from the state, and as such, we're feeling the crunch, just like everybody else. However, getting hit from two sides, from the city side and the county side, it puts the county in some pretty tight spots, especially the health department, whose financial problems are legion. In fact, the city, if they pass this TIF, has the, or the health department, if the city passes this TIF, has the potential loss of at least a clerk, perhaps a nurse, at a time where they've already had to cut the Cushing Health Department down to two days a week, or down two days a week from five days a week to three. This would create a substantial burden on the health resources in our county. In particular, though, I'd like to point out again, the law. The law is very clear. Now, Mr. Bachelor did, was correct indeed, in that since we are an enterprise zone, that it is legal for us to pass this TIF. But also in that law, the legislative guidelines, the first three of them, we miss. The first one is that the tools of this act be used to those cases where investment, development, and economic growth is difficult but is possible if the provision of this act are available. But that growth is already happening. In many cases, it's almost complete. So, we missed that one. Number two of that same legislative guideline says that the tools of this act not be used in areas where investment, development, and economic growth would have occurred anyway, and that the governing body take care to exclude areas that do not meet this criteria. But instead, we're including all the areas where this growth is taking place. And number three, that the tools of this act be used to supplement and not supplant or replace normal public functions and services. But the normal way to do the infrastructure would be through bonds, which are a normal process for cities and counties to raise money. Raising money this way impacts negatively the county and our ability to provide the services that not just the citizens of Stillwater, but the citizens of the county require and It also puts at risk our ability to handle health crises as they come up, as we diminish the ability of the health department to handle incidents that come up. And we are in an incredibly international community. In fact, Payne County had the first case of measles in the state of Oklahoma just a couple months ago, because of the international nature of the people coming in and out of our community. It's because of these and the other reasons that Dr. Major expanded on, that I would request that the city council deny the TIF. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Redding. Our next speaker will be James Cowan.
Good evening. Apologize for my appearance, I just came straight in from the softball field, got here as quick as I could. I don't really have any prepared statements, just came to clarify a few things. I've been asked a lot by many different people as far as the growth in the area, that the proposed TIF is going to take place. We have seen tremendous increases in value, new construction, new student apartments, new office buildings being built. We've had redevelopment of a number of buildings, number of properties in the area. A good example is right down the street, the old Columbus Building that was purchased and converted from its, you know, its old use, which wasn't much, into a retail and apartments. We've got the same thing happening on Main Street. It's, you know, I don't see where we could consider it to be a blighted or stagnant area when we've seen the uptick in prices that we've seen over the past several years. We've got 747 taxable properties in the TIF, soon to be 749, with the south half of Block 40, which was just sold by the Wonderatorium to a private firm. And we also have a building on Main Street that was previously used by Goodwill. Since they've moved out, it will be coming back on the tax roll. We also have new construction to the tune of 75 to 80 million dollars that is, right now, being assessed at land only. Luckily, Martin G. Jackson's building was done. You have some other land that's been cleared by Presley LLC, backed by the YMCA. They continue to build new properties. I think that, all things considered, the amount of growth that we've seen with, so we had, of the 747 properties, since January 1st of 2015, we've had 112 sales, and those sales averaged 156 percent of their appraised value, which shows me that the market is moving upward rapidly. People are paying a premium for these properties to redevelop or to own, have property close to the university or downtown. We have the south half of Block 40, which we had appraised for $293,000, sold for $550,000. The rest of that block, plus part of the block next to the news press, individual was paid 3.4 million for about $1.7 million worth of real estate. So, evidently, that individual either knows something, or he's betting on that Block 34 is going to be developed, and this is all money that will be captured by the city moving forward. It's not going to have any benefits to any other entity. And at a time when, Doug Major said it best, when the state is having a tough time putting, you know, funds in the hands of the schools, that to come in and do this when it is already an area of growth and everything is moving upward, I would urge you to either table it or vote no tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, next up, Kent Bradley.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilors. Kent Bradley, 3025 South Isabel Point Drive, County Commissioner, District Three. I want to just simply put, I try to break things down simply, okay? Our form of government is a little bit different from the city. Our majority of all our money we get for our general fund is from ad valorem tax, okay? So, what we're trying to do here then is you're going to cap our ad valorem tax, voting for the next 25 years, okay? Let me put it on your shoes. If I come in here and the tax, sales tax you got right now, we're going to cap, the county's going to cap the city, so for the next 25 years, any increase in your sales tax, the county's going to get. So, see how that, that's why we have so many county officials right now against this TIF, because you're taking our projected growth in this district. And if TIF is such a, is such a great thing, then why did the bid district not get renewed? As a matter of fact, when I first went to the first TIF meeting, that's what I thought it was, was the bid district, okay? We're going to tax ourselves. If people want to tax themselves more, great, get after it. You know, but this is taken from the other entities that rely on this ad valorem tax. Like I say, our majority of it comes from the county, comes from ad valorem. Small percentages come from the sales tax, where we're just basically flipped, you know, from the city. So, I ask you, please, you know, vote no on this, or at least hold off on it until you actually have a true plan, what all this money's going to go for. I mean, I'm all for economic development, but just saying economic development without a plan or a set of ideas, or actually, you know, something we can kind of gauge by, you know, so let's hold off on that until we actually know what the plan is. So, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. All right, next up is Robert Williams.
Robert Williams, 516 West Hall of Fame. I want to thank you for your time. First, I've just had some bullet points, I'm not near as eloquent as Mr. or Dr. Major. I do have several concerns, and some of which are the defined guidelines. There are no defined guidelines, and there are no, that I can find anything that says what this can or cannot be used for as far as whether housing or residential or business. I know it's been said, well, this is for business and tax, but it doesn't say it can't be done, that I can find in the code. And the concern is, what he said earlier, 25 years, what's this council look like in four years? And what your viewpoint is versus there, and who knows where it goes without very set in stone defined guidelines for this program for the entire time of it. Also, the impact of the ad valorem taxes on all of the surrounding businesses. As the county assessor said, prices have gone up in that area because development is going on, and multiple property owners in the area have seen doubling of their property taxes in the recent years, because it has gone up, because development is going on today, and people are paying large sums of money for tracts of land in that area to either speculate that this is going to pass and we can do something better, or because they don't, it doesn't matter, we're going to do this anyway. And so, we've seen this increase in business. One of the things that is noted in the Eligibility and Financial Impacts Report on page nine that is out there, it shows the proposed project area versus City of Stillwater, and it states that this area hasn't grown as fast as the rest of the City of Stillwater, but in the last two years, it has grown substantially after the core development of 2012, so that is working. The development is happening, and it's shown in the proposed project area numbers on that page nine. You can see it, and it is very substantial. It also says no new taxes. Well, that may be true in no new taxes, but as property increases go up, ad valorem taxes go up. That's new tax. That's new tax dollars. And it says in the report, there will be increased ad valorem taxes due to all of this. That's new taxes. So, to say no new taxes, I don't think that that's fair. Also, as was pointed out, this is being compared to Oklahoma City. Oklahoma City has a population in excess of probably half a million people, a greater population of the entire area, well beyond that, and comparing Oklahoma City and Stillwater and what it did there versus it does here, I don't know that that's a relevant fact. If you want to talk about the percentages and decrease their percent by population, because it is, it is a population center that has an effect on it. Also, in the previous meeting, the bid district was mentioned as being a part of this, but I also heard that there wouldn't be a bid district, and now there is some discussion as, well, is there a bid district, or is there not? And I don't think there's a lot of support for a bid district, so I really question whether or not the program, because it was said in the program, the bid district would be a part of this, and then the bid district's not really a part of it, so don't know what's going on. That's all I have. I would propose, though, rather than voting no, to table this motion, because I think it needs time. This doesn't have to happen today, tomorrow, a year from now, we may see the rest of the development costs go up. We didn't need to do this anyway, because it is progressing, as he said. Look at northeast from Sixth and Washington, and you can see the development. It's happening today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, next up, Joe Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome, our new counselor. Like Mr. Cowan said, I apologize for my dress, I just came from a horse show in Oklahoma City, but I feel strongly enough, not like our attorney, who's going to go back that direction tonight, maybe we should have shared a ride, but I'm very concerned about the TIF. I know the city has had to cut, cut, cut. Well, I've talked to some people in administration, and I understand the hard times, but, and I'm not going to get into an argument with our attorney on what's legal and what's not right. I am very concerned that this be a win-win for the City of Stillwater. The City of Stillwater encompasses more than the TIF district. Our new counselor has a background in community development. Community development in Stillwater involves the county, more than just Stillwater. Think about that. You know, the- You know, the county people, look, we are Stillwaterites. And what I, I see, Mr. Bachelor says, no new taxes. He's absolutely correct. No new taxes. But where's this money coming from? It's ice cream and apple pie. That's what we'd like to think. Wrong. You're taking it from other entities that are already suffering financially. I have a very problem with this, a big problem. You're trying to save Stillwater or save this district. It's a money grab, in my views. There are other ways to do it, and I think that if you can come up with these other ways, you will get the support of all of us, that just as strong as I'm speaking against it, I have spoken for Stillwater in the past. I was one of the first, I was one of the three first co-chairmen of the Payne County Sales Tax, that we tried to get this passed in 1993, 1994. It passed. Every sales tax has passed since then, and that's because it's been a county effort. And I just hope, as our speakers have said before, you know, we're hurting every entity that receives these ad valorem taxes. And I just hope you will vote no or table this thing indefinitely, till you come back with a stronger plan. I want to support it. And I thank you very much, Mr. Joyce.
Thank you.
And Commissioner.
All right, next up, Fern Bowling.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Thank you for this opportunity. I want to voice my opposition to the TIF, because it does affect the three important entities in our county and our city. The Technology Center, which Dr. Major's done a fabulous job of presenting that, the county, as well as the Health Department. And I would urge you to vote no on this TIF. And I'm a 30-year board member on Rural Enterprises, Inc. of Oklahoma, out of Durant, where we provide funds for economic development. And you could consider other sources rather than the TIF. And thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, next up is Mike Shanahan.
Mike Shanahan, 5502 West 8th. This reminds me, as the great philosopher Yogi Berra once said, deja vu all over again. I noticed a couple of members back here who were on the Puma Plan Committee, Project Stirring Committee, and along with developers and other stakeholders in the community. We spent six months, 15 years ago, going through this process. It never emerged from the concept phase, for various reasons, and languished. And now I, we're seeing, I think, that there is a need for some revitalization strategy for Stillwater. Now, TIF districts are not new, they've been ongoing for over 30 years. And I'm assuming that the TIF in this form has been vetted by the city legal staff. And I guess I'm misconstruing some of the comments being made, that funds are not being diverted that are already in existence. Those funds are capped, and those continue to flow as they should. What will be done, and I assume you all know this, is any additional revenues will then be diverted into the TIF plan. So the funds will continue to flow. I think what is going on here, we need to have a comprehensive development revitalization plan for this city and the core. We all know that urban regions essentially are the drivers of economic growth. And it's become more and more apparent during the past 15 to 20 years, college towns have become, become more prominent in this effort. I mean, we can look at large college towns, or not even college towns, or cities like Austin, Columbus, Ohio. You can look at medium-sized cities like Ann Arbor, Madison, or cities closer to our region, like Fort Collins and Lawrence. In fact, during this stirring committee 15 years ago, the Stillwater Neighborhood Alliance invited the ex-mayor and councilman from Lawrence, Kansas, to discuss their effort. She spent a couple of days here, kind of briefing us, letting us know at that time what Lawrence had done to revitalize. And Lawrence now is almost 100,000 people. It's becoming not only a student residence area in college town, but also a business center. So I think we need to understand that there's a lot of potential here. It's a, it's a college town with a large public university. We're in between, we're in a triangle between three major mid-cities in the region, Tulsa, Wichita, and Oklahoma City. The location is, is good, with the Oklahoma State can be a driver for economic development. And I think the difference between the Puma Plan, the Z Plan, and this plan, the TIF district, is it's more comprehensive. I think it's a little more strategic. It's trying to connect the campus with the downtown area, and that's been discussed for years, and nothing has really been done. Yes, development is occurring, and much of that is residential, which is, which is fine to capture a lot of the increase in the student population. But I don't think there's been a concerted effort to decide, okay, how are we going to help small business locate in this part of town? How are we going to help businesses that can produce services or goods locate in this part of town? I think this gives us an opportunity to do that. Now, I have my concerns too. Looking at the projected budget, you have 12 and a half million dollars for business development. Again, that's very ambiguous. Based on my discussions with other city planners in other areas, these types of TIFs often are dedicated primarily to infrastructure, and I think that's what we need to do with these funds. These funds, infrastructure can be streets, sidewalks, water sewer lines, and streets. We have a real issue with streets in this town. So to summarize, I think the TIF is a good concept, a good idea. It does need to be fine-tuned, but I think the city finally needs to move forward with some type of comprehensive economic revitalization effort in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we'll have Gary Clark.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Gary Clark, 320 Hyler Lane. You know, as I sat here tonight, I was planning to talk about two things, but I thought I might add a third thing after hearing some of the prior discussion. You know, I've had good friendships and people that I have great respect for who've spoken against the TIF tonight. I see it differently, and maybe it's partly because of my personality. I'm an optimist by heart, and I have, I think something to kind of show for it. But years ago, I lived, moved to Tulsa in 1975, and at that time, I was considering Tulsa and Oklahoma City. And at that point in time, Tulsa was so much further ahead, I think, as a city and a place to live and to work than Oklahoma City. But we failed bond issue after bond issue after bond issue in Tulsa, where Oklahoma City invested in itself with the MAPS Plan and MAPS 2, MAPS 3. And I think today, it's very clear who has come ahead in that whole process. You have a city that's got a, a major league sports team, you have Brick Town, all those kinds of things that Tulsa missed out on by its actions. And you know, one of the things I wanted to talk about in particular was the experience that I had during the Athletic Village acquisition phase, and some of the consequences of that. But as I sat here tonight, and the conversation of your prior two public hearings about, you know, this, this house is being torn, and then this house, this house, this house, this house. And I'm reminded that, it wasn't very long ago, that Farmhouse, and I worked with them to trade them land from the south side of campus for their land on the north side of campus. They built a new house, and we've had an arms race ever since. When you have development go in, you see other people say, well, we need to do something to fix this up. And as a consequence, you know, we're going to change that whole district there. It's really incredible with the speed and with which that has occurred. And I think that is something that this council should and could take into account. I don't know if I can get my slide up on the screen. Okay. I thought it might be helpful to the, oops, thank you, get technical assistance also. Years ago, you know, as I was involved in the Athletic Village acquisition, and in that, in the course of about two years, we took about 80 acres completely off the tax rolls, not, not capping the taxes or anything else. We took them all off the table. And if you look at this chart, I don't know, it's not very, I could see it better on this big screen, I don't know about you, but this is a, the tax collections for the City of Stillwater from 2002, or starting in 2002 through 2016. And what, in the years that we took properties off the tax rolls, were really 2006 and 2007. And if you look, the tax, total tax collections, even though we took, and I don't really know what the assessed value of those properties were, but we paid about $40 million for them altogether, and we, we were paying above the assessed value, obviously. But, and then you do have a dip in 2011 and 12, when the recession, I think, finally took effect, but not, I think it's completely unrelated to what properties that we took off the tax rolls. And then, of course, where our tax collections are increasing again. And so my feeling is, and again, maybe it's partly my optimism, because I, as I said, I have great respect for the opinions of those who've spoken against this, but I really and truly believe that the tax collections for the areas outside the TIF district are going to make up for and continue a growth pattern for the City of Stillwater. And therefore, at least, I am supportive of this particular TIF district. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. All right, next up, we have Russ Tubner.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Thank you very much for, first of all, your passion to, to really care for the core of our community, to revitalize, to reinvest in, in Stillwater. Thank you very much. I stand here tonight to express my 100% full support for the TIF district and the Downtown Campus Link Project Plan. To be sure, since I started my first project downtown, much has changed for the better over the last 25 years. However, contrary to various assertions made tonight and via various letters to the editor, I do not believe, I do not believe that downtown Stillwater and the corridor between it and the campus are in some blissful and sustained state of redevelopment. I don't buy that. You know, some point to the construction of various apartment buildings, I can see that, I can understand that. However, from my vantage point, I tend to look at that more as a questionable allocation of capital, as opposed to some sort of a, a leading indicator of economic growth and revitalization here in the core of downtown, where, where we focus our attention. Their willingness, or outside parties' willingness to devote capital in that way, they do it for whatever reasons they have, but it's completely divorced from the motivations of those of us who are really trying to do things in the core of our community here in the downtown area. In fact, the fact is that there are really some significant headwinds for those of us who have focused our efforts in the core. For example, the Oklahoma State Architect recently issued new guidelines regarding the renovation of historical buildings in seismically active areas. And like it or not, we are now a seismically active area. And since we, with the project on the northwest corner of 7th and Main, intend to change the loading factor, we want to make, we want to bring it up to code, we want to make the second floor be able to handle 100 pounds per square foot, or whatever the code says. Because of that, we fall under these new guidelines, and the net result is, the project cost went up by approximately $250,000. Additionally, the most recent changes in the tax law cut the historical tax credit. Now, for those of us who have been doing renovation projects downtown, this is kind of lifeblood stuff. We've all taken advantage of the 10% tax credit that was applicable to the renovation of historical properties that were not on the, the actual historical registry, which most of our buildings are not. That was, that was really, really important. The fact that this tax credit is now gone, as of this year, is an implicit cost to all of us who seek to continue to renovate buildings and rebuild downtown. Thus, during 2017, as our architect was actually working on the project plan for 7th and Main, the actual total cost went up by roughly 20%, and we didn't even change anything about the building. Those are real headwinds that those of us who are entrepreneurs in the core of the community really have to face and deal with. If you add to that the increasing costs associated with labor and materials, particularly steel, I can't help but form the following conclusion. Without some form of incentives at the local level, significant redevelopment activity in downtown Stillwater will be lower in the next five years than it was in the past five years. And it's really because of that fact and all those factors that I believe, the fact that you're considering this now, and this plan right now, is really perfect. I made a couple of notes as I was listening to some of the comments, and I, I'll try to keep this brief, but there were various comments made about people buying land at very high values in the downtown area. As that person, I would encourage you not to view the fact that some crazy person is willing to pay X dollars per square foot for a piece of dirt, to be symptomatic that there is no problem. In fact, that was my way of saying, you bet there's a problem. There's a problem. We are never going to see some of these parcels developed unless we cleaned up the ownership plat. And my commitment to downtown was, whatever it took, we were going to consolidate ownership of Block 40, so we can actually put it in play for development. Personally, I'm aware of approximately $25 million in potential projects that could happen in the next three to five years in downtown, and sadly, I am fully convinced that $23 million will fall out unless this is passed. I urge you to pass it tonight, and unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Bobby Wintle.
Hello? My name is Bobby Wintle. I'm at 711 South Main, Apartment 4. My wife, Crystal, and I own District Bicycles at 120 West 7th. We've been there for six and a half years. Mayor Joyce and councilors, thank you so much for having me, letting me speak. I believe it's incredibly short-sighted to believe that we are already in a state of exciting development in the proposed TIF area. I think that there is so much more that we could possibly do, and with a program like this, with incentives in place, we can attract new customers. I view myself, as a business owner and as a citizen of Stillwater, as a customer to you. The way that I look at my customers when they walk in the door at District Bicycles is, what can I offer this customer to have the best experience possible before they leave, and for their overall life to be better, and for them to want to come back? The TIF is going to allow the City of Stillwater in this area, this proposed area, to give something back to a customer that isn't realized yet, that isn't there yet. If this does pass, I potentially see no direct advantage, that this is not going to me directly right now. I already have a business, we're already doing things, I'm not looking to do other businesses right now. So I'm not going to be able to apply and get money and use it for my own services. So I'd like everyone to really consider how to look at all of this outwardly instead of inwardly. How is this affecting me? How is this going to affect my family? How is this going to affect this and this and this? No, actually, how is this going to affect the City of Stillwater? How is this going to affect the community? How is this going to affect the county? How is this going to affect the next five, the next 10 years? Let's stop thinking short-sighted. There was a comment made that for the next 25 years, that this would be capped. That is untrue. If we hit $32.5 million, it's done, and we go back to business as usual. If we continue to grow year after year after year, and we see other businesses come because there's an incentive, then we will get there quicker. And then the TIF can be realized, it can be completed, and then we can look at what we're going to do after that. I have a few notes, let me pull them up. I want to ask the question just out loud, how many people are customers I want to ask the question just out loud, how many people are customers for, at businesses that offer incentives? I bet every single one of us in this room right now are more loyal to certain brands and certain places and certain businesses because they offer an incentive program. And we go there more, and we spend more dollars with those people. That's the way the world works right now, we have to realize it, and the city is looking at how they can offer something better to their customers. This must be done correctly. As far as I understand it, there will be a TIF advisory board, and then also all of the council, correct? It will go through one group of people, and then those decisions will get passed on to the council. The people on that advisory board, if this does pass, have to be forward-thinking, they have to be very discerning, they have to be very serious about what's happening and the things that they're voting for, and where these funds go. I don't believe that they should be given to projects that are inwardly focused. They need to be given to projects that truly seek to benefit the community, and benefit the community for a long time, and not just for two, three, or maybe four years. It needs to be well thought out, and it needs to be a very, very serious process. If not, money could be given to things that are not going to work well. I've seen a lot of businesses open and close in the seven years that I've been in downtown, and they had keys to a building, and they had a concept, and they opened the doors, and they wondered why people didn't come and why their business didn't work. Well, I'll tell you why, it was because they had no vision, and they were inwardly focused, not outwardly focused. I am not okay with the status quo, I am not okay with where we are. I believe that there is so much more that can happen in downtown and in this entire TIF-proposed area. With something like this to offer to those that are not currently customers of the city of Stillwater, they're not going to come. It's just the way the world works. No one was going to open District Bicycles for me, no one was going to start Land Run 100 for me, no one's going to run it for me right now, no one's going to do that except for me. If the city of Stillwater wants to see this place be better and to grow, and to go somewhere other than where it currently is, we have to do something about it. I believe that this TIF is that. I would like to submit my 100% approval for it as well, and my, my support for it is, is in full, right here in this moment. And I'm not from Oklahoma, I'm from Kansas. Stillwater, Oklahoma is now my home, and my family is here, and I want to see things happen. And I think that this is the time, but it has to be done correctly. So let's figure out what that motion is, let's figure out what that plan is together, and let's make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Jay Bryson Baker.
Jay Bryson Baker, 713 South Main. My wife, Rachel, and I own Everyman in downtown Stillwater, and I teach adjunct at OSU. Just wanted to give a different perspective tonight, from a demographic perhaps that is a little unrepresented in this chamber. Stillwater has always been home to me. I was born at Stillwater Medical Center in 1985. My family survived a direct hit from a tornado that passed through the north side of Stillwater in the 90s. I graduated from Stillwater High School in 2004, and in 2011, from Oklahoma State with my masters. I bought my first house with my wife, a block from my alma mater, Skyline Elementary. I love this community. I preemptively ask the council's forgiveness for my hyperbole and sarcasm. The TIF strikes me as the type of opportunity that can result in creating unique and dynamic ventures in Stillwater. I grew up in a small duplex and shared a room with my younger brother until I was 16 off Red Bud Court. There were many fields we used to play in, and it's been so interesting over the years to see the boxes move in. Indeed, over the past 15 to 25 years, big-box retailers and the mighty franchise have laid in exceedingly strong presence in Stillwater. Show me a town that has sub-45,000 citizens, three Walmarts, and a citizenry decrying the lack of a super target, and I will show you a unicorn. As a lover of Stillwater, I often have a very visceral reaction to what seems to be almost a form of sprawl. Stillwater's economic parameters continue to widen, and it appears we may be letting the interior, the heartbeat of our community, wane. This isn't to indict the effectiveness of initiatives like the former bid and the efforts of many thoughtful and forward-thinking developers. However, it does demonstrate that Stillwater has no lack of appetite for chicken, as we recently welcomed our 39th drive-through option. The TIF would allow entrepreneurs like me and my peers to bring thoughtfully local ideas to the TIF area. I know that the millennial generation gets a bad rap these days, but as one, I can speak with certainty of the clout, fortitude, savviness, financial prowess, and clarity to which my peer group approaches this type of opportunity. A moment of transparency, I don't generally hang out in Stillwater. While there are certainly some unique draws to Stillwater, as I've graduated from the somewhat adolescent pee-on-the-floor beauty of the Washington Strip, I've really gravitated to more experiential environments. Love to grab a beer at Oakenore in the Plaza District before checking out a show at The Lyric. I've taken my entire staff to dinner at Empire, and then paintball at Epic. Picasso in the Paseo District has the best artichoke and spinach ravioli you've ever had. It will change your life. I would love to challenge any decision-maker in the room to consider, and I understand the importance of jobs, but how does the addition of a Kane's Chicken really create long-term value for our community? Are people from 60 miles away planning their weekend around trekking to Stillwater to run through the new drive-through? I can tell you that my family is planning on going to hit up Barrios in Oklahoma City because they have awesome cocktails, and we're going to make a trek to the Tower Theater and perhaps stay at a new boutique hotel on the north side. Over the past six months, I've been meeting with VCs, developers, and investors in Oklahoma City, learning a lot. I'm convinced we can make Stillwater a destination location for the future, but we have to have vision. I have several projects in mind that may not be possible without the opportunity the TIF provides. Bridging the corridor between OSU and the bid, the downtown area seems of noble intent. Stillwater can most assuredly become a place that my generation thinks of as a dynamic and experiential town of entertainment, dining, and community. The TIF unleashes that potential. I strongly urge all to support this initiative and the progress it undoubtedly elicits. Additionally, I would implore this council and others to be thoughtful as the boards and committees are formed. If possible, consider, consider putting some of us who are on the streets daily downtown into positions of influence. Maybe you don't know who we are, might I suggest some names? Bobby Wintle, Chris Peters, Colby Bennett, Austin Ray, Drew Beveridge, Alex Evers. These are all individuals who are downtown every day, love Stillwater, have great ideas, understand business, and want to create unique value. In closing, I don't understand the TIF to cut funding. The TIF seems to me to reallocate future growth. Growth, I would ask those in opposition, what projects, initiatives, and programs will be unable to be realized because of the TIF? I would be open to hearing that clearly articulated. Many of us do indeed have well-thought-out plans that can leverage, that we can leverage with the TIF. I can speak with certainty that these projects, initiatives, and programs will not be done without its approval. I'm open to correction, and what I don't know, several have suggested tonight that the TIF indeed does cut funding to their operations. I would lovingly ask for clarity in this regard. I appreciate the time. Thanks.
Thank you. Clearly just a prop. Next up, Jim Beckstrom.
Jim Beckstrom, 2218 West 4th. Thank you for listening tonight. I appreciate the speakers that have come before me, particularly the last two. I think they bring a level of energy that us old folks have a hard time bringing to the floor every now and again. Quite frankly, it's with some sadness that I find myself here today. I'm optimistic about Stillwater. I share that with Gary and some of these other speakers, but that's not the point. The point is that the founding fathers of our state and legislations ever since have actually put the municipalities in a very, very difficult situation that's unsustainable, quite frankly. One of the reasons that the city of Stillwater is in financial difficulties is because of the way that the fist, the funding, the revenue system is set up for municipalities, and unfortunately, in this digital age, it's just going to get worse. And the, the young demographic in our city is leaning more and more into the online purchases, which are driven both by convenience, but also by a cost of, of goods and services. And so, this concept of reliance on sales tax, although it made a heck of a lot of sense 40 and 50 years ago, in today's environment, it's starting to lose some of its value to communities for all kinds of reasons, and sadly, in Oklahoma, it really puts the municipalities in a really tough spot. I wish that wasn't the case, but thanks to the, to the gumption of the council, you have pursued an alternative way to get revenue, because you've been so hamstrung by the past legislations and the founding fathers of the state. They couldn't have predicted the future, I think, that has shown up here. I fully support the TIF, I think it's a great way to go forward. I think the pie's going to get a lot bigger. I think that's the key issue here. People are betting, I think, that the pie's going to keep growing. It's about changing trajectory of growth. And I think Mr. Bachelor made a great case earlier, you know, it doesn't take but a small fraction of incremental, of growth increase, to cover all these concerns about loss of revenue. It's about changing the trajectory, and I think that's what we're talking about here, and I think that's what the recent speakers have leaned into as well. I'm fully supportive of the TIF. I think it's going to help develop, create that bridge between downtown and the campus. There's infrastructure issues, there's opportunities that can be enabled by, by the TIF, like the Block 34 development. I'm not saying I expect, we expect the TIF to fund Block 34 in its entirety, but we see some opportunities to help make that happen, and it was mentioned earlier as, as something that will help grow downtown. There are other things, infrastructure needs that we have in the city, and particularly in this district, to, to fill in some of the blight we have. I don't know how you can drive from here, or even walk. I'm not even suggesting that you walk, or try to walk, from here to campus. It's not pretty, it is not pedestrian-friendly, it is not an easy connection. There is not a good link between here and campus. This will enable that. So, in closing, I just want to say, I thank for the, thank you for the opportunity. I think this is absolutely the right thing for Stillwater. I think it's about making the pie bigger, I think it's about getting more pie for more people, and that everybody's going to win on this. If you bet against Stillwater, then yeah, you come out viewing this as a loser, but if you're betting that Stillwater's going to grow and this will help make it happen, then I think it's a win-win for everybody. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have three more folks who signed up before the meeting that I don't see here, Jeremy Howard or Brady. So that's everybody I've got on my list. Anybody who is here that thought they signed up, that didn't, oh, Shirley, you did sign up for both, you're right. I'm sorry. It was only one piece of paper, so it already got tucked away.
Shirley Weeks, 71 University Circle. I agree with some of the former speakers. There's been great speakers here tonight. Hey, I almost wish my well-being to go buy a bike right now. I'm not an expert on economic development. In fact, I'm not just real good with money matters. What I have noticed over time of coming to many meetings in many areas is that you are elected officials, are asked to pick winners and losers. And tonight, that seems to be a theme here, of who's going to win and who's going to lose. So what I would like to ask you to do is maybe to table, I'm not sure if that's the right direction, but to address some of the concerns of people that are going to be the big loser. I'm a big supporter of community health items. I know our county does a lot of good work. So I would like to ask you to look, is there a way to maybe alter, change the plan, so these people have less to lose, and, and work this out, so to the betterment of our city and to our county? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else who signed up who I didn't call? All right. Thank you all for your time and for your comments. I am going to close the public hearing at this point. I'm going to ask councilors for comments or discussion, if they have any at this point. We, we don't have a decision at this point in the agenda. We would have a potentially one to talk about later when we get to ordinances, but just for general discussion purposes at this point, I will, I will ask, if you have comments. I am going to, to start real quick, just because I was the, the chair of the community committee that looked at this plan, and, and address a couple of the just sort of facts about the, the plan itself, and kind of how we got where we are, just from that standpoint, not necessarily an opinion, well, a little bit of an opinion. The first thing I would say, and because this came up a couple of times, and Ms. Weeks just, just addressed it, this question of, of winners versus losers, and the losses that have been described here in terms of the taxing jurisdictions. And I will explain why I think the committee and myself, you know, got to where we are with recommending this plan to the council, because we don't see it as winners and losers. We do see it, as Mr. Williams said, as a win-win scenario for the city and for all of the other county taxing jurisdictions, and for the community of Stillwater as a whole. The funds we're talking about here are future funds. There is not a single entity will write a check to the city for this TIF funding. We're talking about deferred future revenue. The only money that the TIF collects, starting next year, or the year after, or whenever it was to be passed, would be growth in this area above what was already occurring before the TIF was passed. So, not a single entity will have a lower budget number next year because of this TIF than they have this year, unless property values for the rest of their area were to drop somehow, which has not been the case here in a long time. So, this idea of taking money out of someone else's budget is not an accurate way of looking at the TIF from the standpoint of how TIFs work. It, it is future deferred revenue that we're talking about taking, that, that would be deferred until the TIF is over, and at that point, those, those jurisdictions would get that money back. That's how the TIF is set up. I, I am confused, Mr. Redding, who I think left, his comments about losing a nurse or losing people from the county health department? I don't understand how that could be the case, given that nobody's budget is being cut. Nobody is writing a check to the city for this TIF funding. This is all, next year, instead of getting $100,000 in extra revenue, you're going to get $90,000 in extra revenue, because the area around it, still, that growth still goes to the, to the taxing jurisdiction. It's a small portion of that taxing jurisdiction's land that is capped for future growth. Along those lines, the legality issue is, is one that has been addressed many times as well. The committee received legal advice from our hired council. We have received legal advice from the city attorney, who have all indicated that this is well within the limits of how this plan is to be used. This is a plan that was passed by the legislature, it's been used many times, it's been used many times in this specific fashion. I don't know what else to say about the question of legality, except to say, lawyers who do this for a living have told us that this is clearly within the bounds of the act. So as a council, I'm not sure what else we do with this question of legality. To me, this is a question of policy. This is a question of, does our city want to invest in itself or not? Do we want to try to build a coalition of community partners who say, this is a plan that will help generate future growth, long-term future growth for our community? It's not a question of, for us, it's not a question of, is it legal or not? It's a question of, does this generate future benefit for our community? And can we collaborate with the county, with, with Meridian Technology, with the schools, school district, and with county health department to make that happen? So, it's difficult some, you know, to hear what I would describe as mischaracterizations of how a TIF works in, in these, these conversations. And so, I would like to, to just point out at the beginning, at this point, I would like to ask you all, councilors, for comments, questions, clarifications, any other discussion you'd like to have at this point.
I can clarify, as far as the health department, I think you misunderstood this statement. What his statement was regarding, and I cannot state that I'm for or against the TIF, but as far as the health department's concerned, his statement was, if we continue to grow as we currently are growing, you're talking about growth over time, and that growth equaling the salary of possibly a clerk or a nurse on an annual basis.
Adding one in the future.
Yes.
Understood.
Well, not necessarily adding one in the future, paying for that particular, paying for that particular MTE on his annual base.
Could you come to the podium, please, so we can have your comments on, on the record?
No. I mean, I, I'm just clarifying the questions that you asked.
Well, Mr. Redding stated, and you're, just for the record, Kelly Rader from the county health department, correct? He stated that you guys would lose a nurse. Is that true or not?
The statement is that, you know, when you're looking at growth, and what we will not be able to receive... not be able to receive is the TIF pass, and we hit that level mark for a certain period of years, that dollar amount could be, would be, I mean, if you're looking at the
Over the 25-year period.
Well, and that's actually, you know, great, would be much greater than that growth for that period of time, would extend past the cost of a nurse or clerk, and that's their salary, that's their credit.
Okay.
And for us, that is huge. I know that may sound very small for other entities, but when you have a nurse that is serving your county to follow up on communicable disease, to follow up on tuberculosis.
Understood. I'm happy to have you come to the podium if you'd like to make further statements.
That's fine.
Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify, that was my understanding of the statement, and as far as our budget, that's the statement.
Okay. Thank you. Councilors?
Mr. Mayor, if you're willing to allow.
Doug, public hearing's closed. You've had your chance to make your comment. We can talk afterwards if you need to clarify something. Thank you.
I would like to say that I am probably kind of sad tonight, because I do think that we lose sight of all of us in this together. I like the idea that this is, I like, I believe, this is a win-win. And I, you know, we all speak out of our own particularity. I definitely respect the people who belong to the other taxing entities, tax-receiving entities, their complete commitment and dedication to their own entity. And, in my own place, I am speaking for the city of Stillwater. Also, as a citizen, you know, I, this is, I was woke up this morning, and I went out to walk. It was not quite light out, and the streetlights were on, so I could walk on the sidewalks, and I could walk on the street. And I could, I walked up by Boomer Lake, which happens to be City Lake, walked on the path, the traffic lights on Lakeview, went on and off. And it's almost, it struck me that it's so difficult, as a fish, to define water, but it's also difficult, as a citizen of Stillwater, to recognize all the things that the city of Stillwater provides. Luckily, I didn't have an accident while I was walking. I have been known to fall, but I didn't. If I had, I would have called the emergency services, police would have come, fire department would have come. And I, we all depend, I mean, this is the fabric that Meridian lives in, this is the fabric that OSU lives in, that the county lives in, that the health department lives in. If the fabric falls apart, we all lose. And, you know, just, you know, talking about loss, I mean, one person mentioned capping the sales tax. Well, we'd kind of like to cap, cap the sales tax, because it's been going down for the last several years. If we could keep it level, we'd be okay. But we've cut our budget, the city budget, 18% over the last three years. Public service, just pub, health, safety services, police, fire, emergency, 60% of the general fund. Now, who doesn't use the public safety services? Meridian uses them, county uses them, et cetera, it's public schools. If the city cannot think of creative ways that are legal to support ourselves, we all go down. I think this is a huge chance for us to be creative, to be bold, and to do something good for everyone.
Thank you.
So I'll just follow up some of those comments. I've spoken to quite a few people about this TIF, some of those in opposition, some of those for. At the end of the day, the way that I look at this is, and it's in the title, is an investment. It's a, it's a way that we can improve our quality of life, our business development over the coming years, without sticking our heads in the sand. I think the idea of letting things remain the status quo is nearsighted. It's a myopic view, and it's a view that, when taken into context of the way that taxing revenues are going these days, with Stillwater generating about 68% of its revenue from sales tax, is not going to stay the same. In fact, it is going to get worse. The idea of online retail is, it's a good business model, and it works. And I think that that, that the revenue over the last several years, as far as sales tax goes, speaks for itself. We need to do something that is going to invest in ourselves. I can understand some of the arguments, Doug, having a meeting with you, and you make good points. At the end of the day, what we're asking for is an investment in our city, in our quality of lives, in making everything better for the citizens of Stillwater. That's what we're asking for, is an investment. And I think that hoping and sitting around and waiting for things to get better, I just, at my very core, cannot deal with that. I would rather do something and fail than not do anything at all. And based on the numbers that I've seen in this, the chances of failure of this are exceedingly low. And so, for that reason, I look at this as a win-win as well. I would have to echo Vice Mayor's comments on that. So, I'll reserve further, further comment for our ordinance, but...
Well, I'm the third one to talk, and I'm probably in the most unique situation, that as I said, as a city councillor, and as an employee of Meridian Technology Center. And so, I have a view. We're talking about personal things. 10 years ago this month, I opened up a business in downtown Stillwater. That 10 years ago, people thought I was crazy. Not only was I going to open up a business downtown, but it was going to be a wine bar. And I can remember my parents thinking, you're crazy, but I wanted to take a chance, because I believe Stillwater, and I believe in development, and I believe that there's opportunity. And 10 years later, I don't own it anymore, but it is a business that is doing well, and I've loved to see downtown grow. I'm also a proud employee of Meridian Technology Center, and have someone who leads Meridian Technology Center as our superintendent, has been a mentor of mine for years. And it is hard when something that you believe in, or something that you want to grow, has so, some challenges in it, in that people or viewpoints or perceptions are that it is, might be not in the best interest of everyone involved. And I wasn't part of the review committee process, and I think that's kind of hard, because we, we all weren't. So we don't know what conversations were had, we don't know what type of dialogue took place during that time. And it is hard when you have some very strong oppositions from entities that will be affected by this. It's a tough decision for me, I have to be perfectly honest. I really do see both sides to this, and it is, it's, I don't know if at this point, I'm, you know, if we're, if I'm ready personally, but I have to, I have to rely on the council, and I also have to rely on what I think is truly right. I love this town, I love this community, and I think it's, it's time for, for some development to occur.
Thank you. Counselor Zaleski?
How does this work? Nobody's...
Is it on? How does this work?
Does it work, then? Obviously, I'm new to this, new to the council, and new to this specific conversation here in Stillwater. Fortunately, in my career, I've had the opportunity to see TIFs at work, in development, and redevelopment, and revitalization, so I do have that, that background. And I've spent the last few weeks also having the opportunity to speak to those in the community that are for this proposal, and that are against this proposal. And I agree with a lot of the sentiment that our council has expressed. I really believe that all votes rise together. I think that as we work together as a community, there's lots of opportunity for the different entities involved to also grow, and to experience a positive benefit from it. And I believe that being bold right now is really, is important for our community. I think we're right on the precipice of, of making some really important decisions, and moving in a really forward direction, and I think being bold is kind of a part of that. And so, even though it can be uncomfortable, and some of the conversations can be uncomfortable, I think it's important that we have them. Obviously, it's important that our community comes along with us, but I think, as leaders, we need to be bold as well.
Thank you. I'll just speak very brusely at this point, because I tend to get into the weeds of this, as you guys can tell. I've been living this for a few months now, and I've had a lot of very specific discussions about how this should work, and how it could work, and what's good and what's bad about it. When it comes right down to it, to me, this is a plan that invests in Stillwater. It is a, a plan that says, we believe there are assets in Stillwater that are being underutilized, that there is opportunity in Stillwater that is not being realized, that there is, as many of you have said, that there is growth and revitalization that is primed to happen here, that's just not happened. And while we look at this area and say, yes, there's been some real estate deals, there's been some construction, there's been some, some projects that have happened in, within this area over the last few years, I don't think any of us would stand there and look at it and say, this area is becoming a, an attractive, mixed-use, vibrant, sort of an area where people are being attracted to our city because of what's happening between campus and downtown. This plan is not just about trying to raise additional ad valorem taxes. We want to see those go up, but that's not what this plan's about. This plan is about creating the kind of neighborhood, mixed-use neighborhood within this area, that, that is a, an attraction of people to Stillwater, that brings people to our town, as many of you said in public comment, that, that is the kind of place people say, hey, let's go hang out in Stillwater for the weekend because of what they've got going on down there. That is the kind of long-term investment in our community that pays dividends for everyone. It raises property taxes, it raises property values, it raises sales tax revenue, it creates new jobs in our community. This is not a plan that is just about saying, how do we get our property values to go up in this area? This plan is about, how do we create a district in Stillwater that brings new jobs, that brings new retail options, that brings new options for entertainment in our community to keep people here, to draw new people here? This is an opportunity that we have at this point in time, that I, I am afraid that if we let slip, we won't see it again. There is a kind of investment happening on the edges of this area. Right now, the university is investing a ton of money in a performing arts center that's going to draw people from states all around Oklahoma to come to performances. Where are those people going to go after the show's over? What are we going to do as a community to say, oh, look, there's 1,100 people in our town on Friday night to see the New York City Philharmonic play in Stillwater? Look at the rest of what our town has to offer. What are they going to see when they're here? We have an opportunity with that facility, we have an opportunity with all the other people the university brings in, we have an opportunity with the businesses, that the people, the pioneers, who have come to downtown Stillwater and have built vibrant businesses in a mid, in among vacant buildings that have been standing for 30 years with nothing happening in them, and that we can say, yeah, things have sold, things have changed hands, there's some projects that have happened, but it is really difficult to stand anywhere within this proposed district area and say, this is an up-and-coming, vibrant, you know, growing area. We've got pockets, we've got opportunities, and this is the chance, because we have those opportunities right now, this is when we have to strike. If we sit and say, oh, I'm sure it'll keep going, I'm sure that kind of stuff might keep happening, well, that one thing came in, so let's think, you know, three other things probably will come in after it. That's not been the case. It's not been the case. We started talking, as, I'm sorry, the Puma Plan was 15 years ago. We had a plan, and it never came to fruition, because we never came up with a framework to make it happen. That's what this plan's about. It's about taking a tool that's available to us, one of the very few tools that the state of Oklahoma has made available to municipalities, to be able to do something proactive in our community, and to put a plan out there that says, Stillwater is open for business. Stillwater is interested in your business. Stillwater is interested in your company. We want your employees here. We want your new store here. We are ready to stand behind you and support it. We don't know exactly what that's going to look like. That's the beauty of what this plan allows us to do. It gives us the flexibility to say, there's a new job opportunity that's coming to town? Let's figure out how to make it happen. There's a new business that wants to come to town, there's a, whatever it is, we get to make those decisions as a community together, and say which of these options that we've invited in is going to have the biggest impact on our community. We don't have that option now. And that's, to me, what this plan provides. It provides an opportunity to do something. It provides an opportunity to do that at a very, a really low cost to everyone involved. If there's no growth, if the, if the growth doesn't continue in property values in this area, no one loses any money, because all the money comes out of new growth. So, to me, the investment that, you know, of deferring revenue over time is not unreasonable to ask as a community. It is a good partnership for us to get into. The city, we talked about this earlier, Dan, the city has invested quite a bit of our tax money in creating new opportunities for development, correct? I mean, the sales tax that we've put into incentives for businesses, that have created things like Academy that came to town, built a new facility on a vacant lot, and created, I don't know, how much in ad valorem taxes, just from that?
We've, yes, we've been doing this for, for over a decade, and in fact, Counselor Zenati used a great example of her business, when she started Zenati's, but not only downtown, but across the community, where we've jumped in just ourselves, not asking for help from, from anyone else, and have made some significant investments in the community with sales tax dollars. And you heard Vice Mayor Darlington talk about, you know, how we're struggling to provide basic services to this community with those same sales tax dollars, but we've taken those, what we believe are the opportunity to gain more sales tax dollars by making an investment, and telling these businesses that if you come to us, you know, we will incentivize you, we will help you, and, but we will help you with the tax dollars that you generate into our community here. And, for example, the, you know, we all refer to it as the Academy Project, but it was really Oklahoma Stillwater Perkins LLC. And it was a developer who came in and saw a vision for this property. And it took a piece of property, and I'm just going to read it right off, right off the spreadsheet here, that was valued at 400, or assessed value, $413,336, that after the development of that property is now valued at $17.4 million. That's a 4,212% increase, and that's something that everybody has benefited from. The county, Meridian, public schools, the city, everybody in this community has, has benefited from that, and that's, that's a tremendous success story. But we also have others, we have many that have, you know, are well in the 100%, 200%, 1,600% increase in valuation of properties because of the investment that you and previous council members have made in this community. And as our business owners, and I just want to take this opportunity to say how impressed I am with our young business owners in this community. Holy mackerel, you guys are doing a phenomenal job, and your thought process, the way you are handling things is, is really, really, really bright spot for this community. You guys are doing phenomenal. Keep it up, and the more of you that we can get in here, the better off we all will be. It, it's kind of like, you know, when you get into a betting situation, and you just keep letting it ride, and pretty soon, you get a big, a big return. And I'll tell you what, the more we can bring you guys in, the more we can let it ride, we're going to see some tremendous, some tremendous returns. So, I want to thank you for, for what you're doing, but certainly, the investment that we have made has, over the past decade, has yielded tremendous benefits for everyone.
Thanks, Dan, I appreciate that. And that is, again, just goes to the point of collaboration, coming together, all of us investing a little to bring in a large return. That's, that's, to me, what this plan's about. So, again, appreciate everyone who came and spoke, and councilors for your comments as well. We're going to move on now, in the agenda, to item 8A, which is general orders, revisions to chapter 35 for compliance with Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality for municipal separate storm sewer systems permit. Mr. Blankenship? I think that's for you.
That's me, okay. I was taking a breath there.
Sorry.
Caught me off guard. This is a revisions to chapter 35, which is our stormwater regulations. We have not updated these regulations.
We have not updated these regulations in a number of years, and in order for us to maintain compliance with the state regulations and federal regulations, we need to make these updates. One of the things that we did when we update, we have these proposed updates, is it simply brings us into full compliance. We did not go beyond or above what the state and federal requirements are. We believe just taking us up to the next step and getting us into full compliance is an excellent step. We did present the proposal to the Builders Relations Committee there. They're one group that will be impacted, but otherwise, we feel that this, just like I say, brings us into compliance with state and federal regulations and puts our stormwater program into an excellent position. And so we are recommending approval of the proposed ordinance.
Okay. And that's Ordinance 3399, which is on the next item of the agenda, correct?
Correct.
All right. Questions or comments on this matter, councilors?
No.
All right. Hearing none, that takes us down to Item 9, ordinances on first reading. Item A, Ordinance Number 3399, that we just spoke about. An ordinance related to stormwater management in the city of Stillwater, amending Stillwater City Code, Chapter 35, currently titled Stormwater Management and Earth Changes. That's kind of a cool title.
We're going to change the earth.
Amending Chapter 35 by re-titling it as Stormwater Quality and Management. Amending Article 1, titled in general, Section 35-1, by amending certain definitions and adding new definitions. Amending Article 2, titled Drainage and Sedimentation, to provide for the more effective prohibition of illicit discharges into the city's municipal separate stormwater sewer system. Amending Article 2 and Article 3, titled Earth Changes, to reassign responsibilities from the city engineer to the Development Services Director or the director's designee and to the stormwater program manager, and providing for severability. Whew. That's it? All good? Is that it? It's the end of it.
Very good.
Councilors, questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to advance to second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance Ordinance Number 3399 to second reading. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, Ordinance Number 3399 is moved to second reading. Item B, Ordinance Number 3407, an ordinance approving and adopting the reinvestment plan, a Stillwater Downtown Campus Link Project Plan pursuant to the Oklahoma Local Development Act, Designating and Adopting a Project Area and Increment District Boundaries, Establishing a Date for the Creation of Increment District Number Three, City of Stillwater, Adopting Certain Findings, Authorizing the City of Stillwater to Carry Out and Administer the Project Plan, Establishing a Tax Apportionment Fund, Declaring Apportioned Funds to be Special Funds for the City of Stillwater or the Stillwater Economic Development Authority, Authorizing the Use of Increment Revenues for the Financing or Payment of Certain Project Costs, Authorizing the Stillwater Economic Development Authority to Carry Out Certain Provisions of the Project Plan, Ratifying and Confirming the Actions, Recommendations, and Findings of the Review Committee and the Stillwater Planning Commission, Directing Continuing Apportionment, Providing for Severability, and Declaring an Emergency. Councilors, comments on Ordinance 3407. I think we all made a lot of comments already. Does anyone have a motion?
Motion to advance Ordinance Number 3407 to second reading.
I have a question about that then. So are we, is, what is the plan for this ordinance? Are we advancing this to a second reading?
So this would be the ordinance that adopts the proposed project plan, and it would be advanced if, this would be a vote to advance it to second reading, which would then have a second reading at our next meeting or another...
June 18th.
June 18th meeting for second reading on the ordinance.
Okay. I was just confused about the emergency clause then.
So the emergency clause puts the ordinance, as soon as second reading's over, it starts...
It's in effect as soon as publication is made in the newspaper.
I see. Okay. Then I will second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to advance Ordinance Number 3407 to second reading. Any discussion? Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, Ordinance Number 3407 is advanced to second reading. Item 10, Reports from Officers and Boards. Mr. Dorman?
One item tonight, sir. Requesting executive session pursuant to 25OS Subsection 307B4 for the purpose of confidential communication regarding pending litigation, Rex Hayes versus City of Stillwater, Case Number CJ18131, Payne County District Court. It is my opinion that public disclosure of this matter will seriously impair the ability of the city council to defend this pending litigation in the public interest.
Thank you, Mr. Dorman. Before we go on, did we need a separate motion on the emergency clause on that?
Not tonight.
No, on the second reading.
Second reading.
Second. Thank you. Item B, Mr. Blankenship. I almost called you Mr. McNichol.
I've been called worse. Actually, that would be an honor if you would call me Mr. McNichol. So that is miscellaneous items from the city manager. I have maybe a couple items, or at least one thing I want to cover under the general, under the city council meeting, is that we have been advised that Gary Johnson, longtime director of our airport, is announcing his retirement effective in September. Recently, we promoted Mr. Paul Pregele as the Assistant Airport Director with the expectation that at some time that Mr. Johnson would be retiring. And so over the next few months, Gary will be continuing to mentor Paul to be able to at least carry on, and we'll have some consistency there. So they're going to be busy working in transition and the master plan and long-term capital improvements. So Mr. Johnson has brought a tremendous amount to our airport and was real instrumental in bringing commercial service, which I personally have used and think it's absolutely wonderful. And so we were kind of sad, a little bit bittersweet, to hear that he's going to retire, but he's done a lot for our airport and our community, and good luck to him.
Absolutely. He's had a number of years of great service to the city and to this community. Councilor Zenati?
Yes, we are one month away from the Chickasaw Boomer Blast Fireworks Show. This year's fireworks will shoot from Lakeview Bridge. Guests can also watch the show from Stillwater High School Pioneer Stadium or walk into Boomer Lake Park. Parking will be available at Pioneer Stadium, Simran Plaza, and along public streets. And a shuttle service will be available to and from the stadium to Boomer Lake's south entrance on Lakeview.
That's awesome. That's a new venue for us this year. We had issues with rescheduling the last couple of years, and so city staff has worked very hard to find an alternative, to figure out how we can make sure that the show goes on as scheduled. So that's exciting. Thank you. Vice Mayor Darlington?
I think another little addition to that, Cameoka Trail access by bike or walking also.
Ride or walk right up there.
Bike, use your bike. Get some exercise. Not me. Charlie? Charlie, you want to get a bike?
Don't put your well-being at risk, but...
We'd like to congratulate two team members, two city team members, on their recent accolades. Operations Maintenance Worker John Meehan earned his certificate of completion for the ROADS, R-O-A-D-S, Scholar Program through OSU's Local Technical Assistance Program. Wastewater Treatment Plant Laboratory Technician Art Leage received the Laboratory Analyst Excellence Award from the Water Environment Federation. Love to have people learning and moving on.
Good to hear. Thank you. Councilor Wedlake?
Thank you, sir. If your child is interested in learning tennis, you can register them now for youth tennis lessons. Sessions for both beginners and advanced beginners are available throughout the summer at the Couch Park Tennis Courts. And if you'd like more information on that, you can go to the city's website, stillwater.org, for more information on how to sign up.
Thank you. Councilor Jaloski? Did we turn, is the green light on?
Thank you, good.
It's a new button. This is new counselor hazing.
Please, everyone, help us. Say good luck and thanks to Deputy City Manager Dan Blankenship for 15 years of service to the city of Stillwater and our community. A thank you reception for Dan is scheduled before our next city council meeting on Monday, June 18th, in the Stillwater Police Department lobby. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. I'm just glad it's in the lobby and not downstairs.
Thank you all. All right, that takes us to executive session. We'll go ahead and recess the city council meeting and move on to the SUA agenda. At this point, I will call the regular meeting of the Stillwater Utilities Authority for June 4, 2018, to order. Councilors, questions, comments, or motions regarding the consent docket?
Motion to approve the consent docket. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. That takes us down to reports from officers and boards. Mr. Dorman?
Nothing to report, sir.
Mr. Blankenship?
One thing very quick, sir. As you will see at your seat, trustees, there is a little white box that contains a cup in it. If you open that up, you'll see that that says RP3. The City of Stillwater Electric Utility has recently been designated as an RP3 provider. The American Public Power Association designates public utilities in three different levels: gold, platinum, and diamond. For the first three years that we were in the program, we were a gold designee. We were raised to platinum level, and that the designation recognizes public powers that demonstrate proficiency in four key disciplines: reliability, safety, workforce development, and system improvement. Interestingly enough, that I mentioned this this evening. Saturday, we had a pretty significant outage that impacted, at one point in time or another, almost 8,000 of our customers. But in the grand scheme of things, it was something that occurred, storm damage that we weren't aware of, and then it manifested itself on Saturday. But within about an hour and a half, we had the vast majority of our customers back online, and I attribute that to the dedication and all the hard-working employees that we have in our electric department. And I'm very, very proud to say that we have this designation. There's over 2,000 public power agencies or municipalities in the nation. Approximately 200 are part of the RP3 program, so we're in the top 10%, and we're in the middle tier of that. So we're really in the mix as far as providing reliable public power to our community. It's a great asset for our community and very pleased to make that announcement.
That's excellent. That is...
Dan, did you say that it was platinum?
Yes.
We're platinum?
We are platinum, yes. We...
Is the cup platinum?
Is the cup platinum? Yes, yes, Vice Mayor Darlington, the cup is platinum in color. Yes, that would not be a good expense of our customers' dollars to provide platinum cups. But yes, it's in significance, a pretty significant achievement for our community.
Absolutely. Thank you to all the folks who kept the power on this weekend and who do a great job on a consistent basis in being recognized.
We're not perfect, but we're pretty darn good. We work hard at it, too.
Excellent. Thank you very much. That takes us down to adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Trustees, please vote. We have a motion, with a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting is adjourned. I will now reconvene the Stillwater City Council meeting.
City Council.
Oh, wow. Citya? I do have Citya. Look at that. It's right there.
I can send that.
It's in my folder. All right, I will call, at this point, the meeting of the Stillwater Economic Development Authority for June 4, 2018, to order. And councilors, I will ask for comments, questions, or motions on Item 2, the consent docket.
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. That takes us down to reports from officers and boards. Mr. Dorman?
Nothing to report, sir.
Mr. Blankenship?
Nothing to report, sir.
Trustees? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right.
Thank you, Councilor...
A star by that one. We have a motion and a second to adjourn. With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater Economic Development Authority meeting is adjourned. Now I will reconvene the Stillwater City Council meeting, and at Item 12 on the agenda, there's an executive session. Is there a motion to enter executive session?
Motion to enter executive session. Second.
We have a motion and a second to enter executive session. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, we will now enter executive session.
I'll close it out.
What we want to do is we want to relocate the fire station in order to provide more efficient services, okay?